Well, recently, I may have come back out of pro session, which we had for the purposes of alternative private, we have done a roll call. We will now stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, the line of nation under our, in the small, considered justice law.
All right, we are now on to the adoption of agenda and approval of the consent agenda. I am looking for a motion. Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda approved the consent agenda action item number twenty-two dash zero eight dash zero five. Thank you. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
It's been moved by members to do and seconded by member Wilson that we adopt the agenda and approve the concern agenda action item twenty-two oh eight oh five. Ms. Moore, would you take us through it?
Yes, thank you, President McCoyn. This evening, we have human resources transactions. Since the last time we were together, we have a room full of champions for you to consider as firing and bringing on board to lead our students this evening. We also have administrative replacements for the resolution to consider the hiring of the dean of students at Canton High School and the student support coordinator at Workman Elementary School. This evening, we also have leaves, resignations, and retirements, the approval of minutes from our regular meeting that was on August the tenth, 2021, and we have the action item to consider the approval of a tentative agreement with the Plymouth Canton Education Office personnel.
All right, I'm favor say yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
And a person no. All right, uh, class six zero. Uh, Dr. Bartian Gibbs.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to take a moment to introduce you to forty-one new teachers in our district. These forty-one teachers started on Monday, August thirtieth, and when I say your name, please stand up. We have Karen Arnie Arini. Karen is going to be working at Allen Early Childhood Center. She is an early on service provider. She comes with twelve years of experience. Thank you, Karen. Amy Vova. Amy will be teaching at Halsing Elementary School. She comes with five years of teaching experience. Michelle Brown. Michelle Brown will be teaching at Tonda Elementary School, and she comes with six years of experience. Jamie Caddy. Jamie is going to be teaching at Gallimore Elementary School, and she comes with eleven years of experience. Dana Sasa. Dana is going to be teaching at Allen Early Education Center as an ASD teacher. She comes with ten years of experience. Amanda Shabon is our new English teacher at Canton High School. She is coming with seven years of experience. Anna Crosby. Anna is our new teacher at Bentley Elementary School. She will be a classroom teacher with over four years of experience. Kirsten Cunningham. Kirsten is coming to us from Eastern Michigan University. We are so fortunate. We will be the first district she is teaching in, and she will be at Gallimore. Welcome. Jessica DeCatta. Jessica will be an elementary classroom teacher at Tonda School. She also selected our district as the first district she will be teaching in. Dana Dinoir. Dana will be our new teacher at Workman School. She will be a resource room teacher, and she is coming with five years of experience. Amy Dinsmore. Amy is a new English teacher at Salem High School, coming with fourteen years of experience. Erica Fox. Erica, well, you might recognize Erica. She worked in the counseling office at Canton High School, and now she's going to be teaching at Halsing Elementary School as an elementary classroom teacher, and she also selected our school district as the first school district to teach at. Olivia Foster. Olivia is our new English teacher at Plymouth High School, coming with over eleven years of experience. Jennifer Francikus. Jennifer is a new teacher at Tonda Elementary School with over sixteen years of experience. Isabel Gasprovic. Isabel is also a new teacher at Tonda School. She also selected our district as the first district here, and she also completed her internship here in our district at Halsing School. John Girdron. John is our new health and PE teacher at the middle school level who will be working in the virtual academy, and he comes with seventeen years of experience. Elizabeth Glenn. Elizabeth is our new language arts teacher at Liberty Middle School with one year experience. Andrea Greer. Andrea is our new early on service provider at Allen School. She also selected our school district as the first district to begin her career. Thank you. Michelle Breeze. Michelle is coming from our preschool program. She has been a PCCS preschool early childhood teacher for fifteen years, and now she will be a pre-K teacher at Allen for the GSRP program. Megan Hartwood. Megan is our new teacher at Halsing School, and she also selected Plymouth Canton Community Schools to start her career. Anne Kelly. Anne comes with ten years of experience. She is going to be working at Field and Dotson Schools as a resource room teacher. Abby Kavotek. Kovachak. Welcome, Abby. She's our new computer science teacher at Canton High School, right here at this school, and she comes with two years of experience. Mary Kruger. Mary is our new language arts teacher at East Middle School, and she comes with one year experience. Jenny Kuski. Jenny is our new English teacher at Salem High School. She comes to us with over ten years of experience. How do you say your last name, Jenny? Kukaski. Thank you. Rachel Wayne. Rachel is our new elementary classroom teacher at Erickson School with two years of experience. Leah Lottman. Leah is going to be teaching at Smith School as an elementary classroom teacher, and she comes with ten years of experience. Emily Longville. Emily will be teaching at Hoben School as a classroom teacher with over seven years of experience. Amber Lotman. Amber will be teaching at Miller School as a classroom teacher with four years of experience. Catherine Mar Donrean. Catherine, are you here? I will find out how to pronounce her name correctly. She is going to be our new social worker with over eight years of experience. Nicole Margogian Galindo. Nicole comes to us with twelve years of experience. She will be an English teacher at Salem High School. Amy Martin. Amy will be teaching at Miller School as an elementary classroom teacher with seven years of experience. Tonya McDermott. Will be teaching at Miller School as an elementary classroom teacher. You pronounce her first name, Taryn, and she comes with seven years of experience. Amanda Parker. Erickson Elementary School. She will be a resource room teacher, and she comes with seven years of experience. Daniel Person. Daniel will be working at Liberty Middle School in in language arts, and he comes with eight years of experience. Danielle Palucio. Tisla. Danielle comes with ten years of experience. She was an early childhood teacher here at Allen School, and now she will be pre-K GSRP at Allen School. Welcome. Lauren Russ. Lauren is a new math teacher at Salem High School, coming with one year experience. Karen Salaw. Karen is our new classroom teacher at Bentley Elementary School, coming with eleven years of experience. Revec, excuse me, Rebecca Viduula. Say that one more time. That's perfect because she'll be working at Bentley Elementary School. She has an ELD teacher, and she comes to us with four years of experience. Renee Weiss Standstill will be at Tonda School. Renee is our new behavior support specialist with eight years of experience. Janine Lyary. New English teacher at Salem with over thirteen years of experience. I would like to welcome all of you to Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Thank you for choosing us. A big thank you to all of our administrators and their teams for hiring these champions. So congratulations and welcome. We know you are all so busy, and you have to go home and laminate and cut and do that. But we thank you for spending some time with us here this evening. I now have the pleasure to introduce you to two new administrators in our district. One is not new, Brenda Isler. Brenda has been with us for nineteen years as one of our security officers. She has a bachelor's of science in physical education and health from Saginaw Valley University. She is being recommended as the dean of students at Canton High School. Welcome, Brenda. We are so fortunate to have Brenda here this evening. Brenda, do you have any words you would like to share? Earl Kirkpatrick. Earl is being recommended as the student support coordinator at Workman Elementary School. Earl comes to us with a bachelor's degree in business marketing from Oklahoma University, a master's degree in educational administration from Southwestern Oklahoma State University. He has been a coach, a teacher, an assistant principal, and a principal. Welcome, Earl. Do you have anything you would like to share? I would like to recognize Yvonne Christensen, who's retiring from our district with twenty years of service, and Cynthia Grail Wells, who's retiring from our district with twenty-seven years of service. Thank you.
Moving on, I also just want to make sure that we recognize the negotiating team for our Plymouth Canton Education Office personnel and our district negotiating team led by Mr. Kirk Tiskel for the successful ratification of this contract. This is the final open contract, I believe, out of nine contracts that we've negotiated this year. We appreciate our staff. We are continuing to leave our mark as our destination district that makes sure that all of our staff are respected, valued, appreciated, and it's not just about hiring, but making sure that we retain our staff because they're doing wonderful things to support the learning of our students. So thank you for our secretarial staff and looking forward to a great year.
Great, thank you, and welcome to all the new hires. We're very excited about it and hope you have a great year. We'll be very excited when the students come back on Tuesday. Now, we are on to celebrating success, summer program coordinators. Uh, Mr. Wilson is doing it.
All right, good evening, good evening. Celebrating success this evening, we honor the PCCS educators and leaders who coordinated an amazing summer program for our students during the last few months. If I could have Tori Billings, Liz McCall, Ashley Klein, Jay Blaylock, Renee Schmuckel, Benny Affleck, Kathy Williams, and Carrie Fromm, if they're here, if you can come on down. So we want to recognize you guys because these programs have become particularly important during the COVID-19 pandemic to account for potential learning challenges and other challenges for students. And this talented team that you see before, you did a remarkable job of creating summer programming that was student-centered, diverse, and individualized to the current needs of the students at all levels. PCCS Chief Academic Officer Beth Weller to the podium to share more about the enriching and inspiring program that students at all levels experience this summer.
Thank you. Summertime, picnics in the park, camping, swimming, hiking, boating on the lake, biking, and relaxing at the beach. Another view of summertime, scheduling students into classes, camps, and summer program activities, arranging transportation, collaborating with nutrition services for meals and snacks, communicating with families and students, and implementing COVID-19 mitigation guidelines. The amazing group of people standing before you tonight have spent their summer, could have spent their summer relaxing and enjoying themselves. Instead, they dedicated their summer to ensuring that our students had a variety of programs to support economic and social emotional needs. Tonight, we recognize the following individuals for their commitment to students. Jay Blaylock. Jay oversaw all aspects of our high school credit recovery and credit advancement and grade replacement programs. Ashley Klein and Tori and Billings. Ashley and Tori collaboratively coordinated the elementary and middle school summer academy programs where students engaged in hands-on integrated units to strengthen their skills and mitigate learning loss. Liz McCall. Liz oversaw the K-11 academic enrichment camp experiences and programs that range from number sense for our elementary students to SAT prep for our high schoolers. Included some unique offerings such as STEM camps, esports, spoken word, and augmented and virtual reality explorations. Renee Schmuckel. Renee facilitated our extended school year program for students who attend our ASD, autism spectrum disorder center-based programs. Danielle Sparhat. Danielle supported our students who identified as English learners through both innovative EL programs and an EL jumpstart program this summer. Carrie Fromm. Carrie coordinated summer book clubs and literacy tutoring to develop and support a love of reading and writing with our students this summer. Kathy Williams. Kathy facilitated math tutoring programs for students to unlock memorancy skills and problem-solving skills and develop a love of learning about mathematics. As a team, the group standing before you supported five thousand one hundred and sixty-seven enrollments in summer programs and one thousand two hundred and ninety-six enrollments for credit recovery. Thank you all for your commitment to our students and spending this summer helping our students learn, prepare, and thrive. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. You guys did an amazing job, and on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to present you with the Mary Beth Carol Ex- Carol Examaya Award for your outstanding work in preparing and executing our district's summer programming. You guys make some noise one more time for... Would any of you like to say a few words? Somebody, anybody.
I would also like to thank Beth for leading us this summer. She provided the framework for us to do our work and the flexibility to be very creative, and I know we did some new things at the high school level that I could not have done without her support. So I also want to thank Beth for her work this summer.
I want to dittle that, not just Lee, but Ms. Vale stepped into the classroom and taught a class this summer, introducing our students to... Tell us about the class, virtual. I'm going to mess it up.
Augmented reality, virtual reality, and artificial intelligences.
And it was an amazing opportunity in exposing our students to something that we hope to continue with this innovative spirit as we move forward. So thank you, Beth.
Thank you so much. That's very exciting. That is a lot. Is that the biggest summer program you've ever had?
Yes.
All right, um, so now we're on to board for reports action. President's report. I really do not have a lot to report. We want to welcome everyone back to school, which will be starting Tuesday. We're very excited. This is what we prepared for, for the students to come back. So we are hoping everybody has a very productive, safe, healthy, and fun year of school. Next up, we have student performance and achievements. Thank you, Madam President. We actually have scheduled our first meeting for the Student Performance and Achievement Committee to be held on September fifteenth at four thirty PM at the board office. Everyone is welcome to attend, so we look forward to seeing some of you. Next up is Policy Committee. We actually met this evening. At five thirty, we had a committee at the hall, and we, so that we could present to the board our equity policy that we've been working on. And Dr. Lee and Dr. Bartanian Gibbs have done a whole lot of work on this, and so we discussed it, and board members who have any additional edits will email them in, and we'll be wrapping this up soon. We have a meeting scheduled for September twenty-eighth, and we may be having another meeting to finish some of the business we were unable to get to tonight. But I will let the committee members know, and we will post it. Next up is Finance and Operations.
Thank you. We met last Thursday, August twenty-sixth at five PM at the board office, and we discussed a number of items that will be on the agenda this evening, including a resolution to purchase a new tractor, a resolution to purchase grab-and-go kiosks at Plymouth High School for our cafeteria, and a resolution to purchase technology, equipment, and services through the emergency connectivity funds. We also discussed the cell towers and the lease agreements that are here at Canton High School, as well as got an update on where we are with our custodial hiring process. So our next meeting is coming up on Thursday, September ninth at five PM. Again, it will be at the board office, and we welcome the community to participate.
All right, next up, we have administrative reports and recommendations. First up is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President McCoyn, and I cannot contain my excitement today. It was an absolutely fantastic day of learning for our educators on their professional development day, their PLC days. I want to thank Dr. Brady and the Quickwoman Instruction Team for leading and developing these activities for our staff. They were so engaging and just really, I'm going to say job embedded and focused on the right work to support our teachers so they can best support our students. Of course, Ms. Vale, I continue to thank you and your amazing teaching and learning team, all of our instructional coaches, just all hands on deck to make sure that we're preparing our staff so that they can best again support our students. And it truly is excitement in the air for the return of our students coming on September the seventh. We had an ice cream social afterwards outside and just having the opportunity to just talk about how good it feels to see students back in the building. They were here this week for scheduled pickup. They had an opportunity through our link and web, we were going to bring that back, that's our sixth and ninth graders, have an opportunity to explore the building, learn their schedules, and it's just such a welcome sight. And I will tell you, as much as we know, this year will be a challenge, it really is just exciting to be back to the work that we do, which is teaching and learning with our kids, and we are so appreciative of those opportunities. One thing I wanted to just share, something that I'm also enthusiastic about, is our theme for this school year, and that theme is creating the future. When we think about our schoolwork this year and all that has happened within this pandemic, there is still such a silver lining. This is giving us an opportunity to really diversify our offerings for students, to do things differently, thinking outside of the box. So when we thought about our theme for this year, we're really focusing on looking forward and how do we create this future for our students in innovative, in bold, and inspiring ways. So when we think about our plan, that's all of us headed in that direction. We're not imagining that we have endless possibilities in order to give our students the educational experiences that they deserve. We continue to hire champions that will lead us in this work, and our collective school community will continue to put us on the map as PCCS. I will always say, you have many options out here to educate our students, but we are the best option for our families in the Plymouth Canton area. I just wanted to give another update of our 2020 bond work and continue to thank our community for our support for this ten-year plan. I am, that night, we just all talked about, that was the very first night, we're celebrating the win of the bond, and then we had our first two cases of COVID, and we've been living the journey of COVID ever since. And so it is so timely to be able to again thank our community for this investment. All summer long, we have four schools that have gone under construction, disconstruction, and these projects will continue and touch every one of our schools in this district, and that is so exciting. We have modern learning spaces, secure entrances, innovative furniture, new gyms and cafeterias, I will say. I'm going to thank Ms. Piers, I'm going to thank Tim G, I'm going to thank our partners McCarthy and Smith. We've had, I mean, so 2021, weather, storms, everything, you're trying to get materials, everything that has pushed us further, but we're still on schedule, and it may not look like it today, but we're ready for our students at Halsing, Erickson, Field, and Dotson. And so we thank everybody, the collective team, Rich, for your hard work in getting us there. And again, it is so exciting. I will tell you, my most, what I got most excited about as we visited schools were the new playgrounds. They're amazing. If you didn't get an opportunity to see them, get your children out there, play on the playgrounds. That is something to really be proud of for our students. Just thank you for everybody that's involved in that. We want to keep our staff and community updated on the progress on this bond. We're going to launch a 2020 Bond Tuesdays, which will be a weekly update on the exciting upgrades that are going on throughout the district. So you know how we're investing these dollars for the enhancement of our students' learning experiences. I do want to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Ed Wright. He's from The Observer. He came out, gave us a great feature story that ran yesterday that's really showcasing these latest updates from the 2020 bond. So if you haven't had an opportunity to read that story, I think it is very well done. And once again, it really highlights this investment of our community, where we believe that education is so important for our students and their experience, to make sure that their buildings, what they see, where they play on the playground, everything really represents how we feel about our students and how we value their experiences here. So we're so disappreciative. The final ask that I have tonight, one piece that's a little scary for me, is, just like everywhere else across the country, the labor shortage is something that we are experiencing here in PCCS, and we have open positions. We are looking for champions for our students in areas of transportation, cleanliness, food service, various areas of instruction. So get the word out. We are looking to hire more champions. I will tell you, we are committed to a district, a working environment that is student-centered and focuses on bringing in adults who are with that same mission and vision, and we want to make sure that we continue to represent an environment that is respectful, where our staff feels valued included. And so this is a great place to be. Put the word out that we are looking to hire. We can visit our official district website at www.pccsk12.com. You can find our human resources tab under the department tab, or simply search for employment. As I transition now, I just want to give a brief update on our mitigation plans for the school year with the excitement of our students coming on the seventh. We just want to make sure that we continue to educate... We just want to make sure that we continue to educate our community, our students, our families, our staff, about the mitigation plans that we have in place. Our absolute primary goal is keeping our doors open for in-person learning five full days a week. And everything in us, from our core, from our head to our toes, is committed to trying to ensure that that will happen. As you are aware, on August 27th, that was last Friday, the Wayne County Public Health Division released an emergency order for control of pandemic. And effective immediately from that order, it required all staff, students, and visitors, both vaccinated and unvaccinated, to wear masks in all Wayne County schools. That's all educational settings. And so of course, we are reviewing that. I issued a communication for our families earlier this afternoon. When we're looking at educational settings, for example, we're holding this meeting in a school. We have students that are present. So we are, again, all hands on deck. We have to do our part to make sure that we're complying with this health order that is in effect, so that we can keep our doors open for learning. When we look at this health order, I will say that it is consistent with the mitigation plans that we had just released earlier in this, in the week. It was comforting when we're looking at high levels of community spread as consistent with... As long as we're in substantial and high levels, and they've given the metrics of being in moderate for 14 days for the time that they would make a decision to move away from that mandate. And so that is something that we all go into this, knowing really the parameters around that mandate. This mandate includes all indoor activities during the school day and after-school indoor activities as well. So that's activities, that's athletic events, any programs, any activities that are held within our school building. This is not applying to outdoors. Outdoors is still, you have that ability to choose, no requirements for masks outdoors. What I do want to say is I urge our school community to come together, making sure that if we all are committed, and I remember really months ago, when we all talked about when our doors weren't open to students and we were virtually learning, it was such a goal to get back in person. And today, I was talking to some staff, the realization that our high school students didn't come back, many of them, into the building in March, and never came into the building for even a full day next year. So the 7th for them represents being back in school for six and a half hours a day, plus their extra activities. And so it is really upon us to take the responsibility to make sure that we're complying, setting our students up for success, so that we have every strategy in place to try to move our high community level of spread to an area of moderate or low, and keep our doors open. I will share that there was one area of the quarantine guidelines that was really a vital factor for us. With our Wayne County Health Department, we follow their quarantine guidelines. When you're looking at masking, both students, when you have a positive case, both students have to be masked to avoid quarantine. So one thing that is really positive, that we know that was a challenge for our students. If you recall, one week last year, we had 900 students out, either with positive cases or in a close contact quarantine. Now with our regulations from the Wayne County Health Department, if our students are masked in an educational setting of at least three feet of distancing, those students will not have to be quarantined if they are exposed to a positive case. So these are really layered mitigation strategies that we have at our disposal to keep our students in class to the greatest extent possible. And that really was something that resonated with all of us. We're working to update our mitigation plans to reflect the new language of the Wayne County Health Department mask mandate. And so we put that out today, also making sure that our requirements that are in there align with the CDC, MDHHS, NHSAA guidelines. So as you noticed, with Director Meyer, he walked us through at the last meeting our mitigation plans. Any changes or modifications, we include in a summary report. I think it's red at the top of that document, so you can always track any changes that we've made. But again, we are just excited. I want to assure you that we will continue to monitor our local transmission data, our trends. We're going to stay in close contact with Wayne County Health Department, making sure that we do our part. No matter what direction it goes, we are fully committed to working to keep our buildings open. And again, I urge you, this is our school community, regardless, I know this is a county mandate, regardless of what may happen throughout the county, we are committed to keeping our kids in school. And I just ask you to stand with me in this journey, because I think some incredible things are on the horizon for our young people this year, and they truly deserve it. So with that, I will wrap up my report, looking forward to September the 7th. I ask for patience as I talk about these open positions with buses and drivers. And we're working around the clock, just trying to get these positions filled, but we know it might be a rocky start. But we are here, we are committed, and we are excited about welcoming your young people back on Tuesday.
Alright, so next up, we are on to Finance and Operations with Ms. Piers.
Good evening. We have three items for your consideration this evening that were discussed, as Member Kehoe mentioned, in the F and L meeting on last Thursday. First item up is a resolution to purchase equipment and services using the FCC Emergency Connectivity Funds. It's a first reading. This is a fund that has for eligible schools and libraries, to cover the cost of laptops and tablet computers, Wi-Fi hotspots, modems, routers, and broadband connectivity purchases. So I have with me this evening Mark Saucer, our Director of Technology, to go through the resolution for first reading. Mr. Saucer?
Yes, so good evening. The resolution, in a nutshell, is we were made aware that there was this fund that was set up to support schools with remote learning.
Mark, can you use the microphone up, please?
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. Alright, we'll start again. So Emergency Connectivity Fund was established by the FCC to assist schools with their remote learning. Got it? Okay. And we did a thorough review of the opportunity within that fund. There was also a connecting with other school districts and a review of our current technology to make a determination as to whether we would be eligible for application, and if we were, what we might be eligible to apply for. After that review, we made a determination to apply for some student devices. They're listed there, 6,000 Chromebooks, 100 iPads, some staff devices, 1,300 of them, and 220, so 1,300 Windows laptops and 220 Chromebooks and 300 hotspots. The application was submitted before the deadline on the 13th. We won't expect to hear from the approval, whether we get a funding commitment for some time. But in the event that we are approved for funding commitment, we're hopeful to make a fast turnaround to submit our application for the purchase of those services and goods. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have regarding that application. But some of the details are spelled out, that there's a significant support or subsidy that's provided for these items. If you have any questions, I'm happy to field them.
I just want to add, sorry, that the total commitment that you're requesting purchase on is approximately $3,890,621, with an expected reimbursement of $3,115,000, or a net out-of-pocket of approximately $775,621, as noted, would be paid for by the 2020 bond funds.
Thank you for those details.
Sean, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Doug?
No questions.
Miranda? No questions. Patrick?
Just want to let the community know that this is for the student devices. This is a replacement of our aging Chromebooks that are not currently supported or able to be updated. And we'll help complement those devices. It'll do the same with some of our teacher laptops to support those, as well as provide connectivity devices for those students in the community that don't have access to broadband or to high-speed internet and to facilitate and support them. So these are great programs and we're really appreciative of the funds that are available to support this and for the community support and the bond to, for the portion that that would be funded as part of. So thank you, Mark.
Yeah, and thank you for that addition. And just to be even more clear, so the 6,000 Chromebooks that we're recommending for purchase would replace a portion, the majority of our Dell 3120s that we purchased in 2015 and 2016.
Anything? Actually, Debbie answered my question, but I do want to take the opportunity to thank you, Mark, for pursuing all the cost savings possibilities through the RMC, through the FCC, which is a really great deal for us as a school district. So I hope this goes through. Thank you.
You too. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. This is a good cost savings, and then we can use the money for other educational needs for our students. Fantastic. Alright, next up, we have action item 220806, consider a resolution to purchase Grab and Go kiosk at Plymouth High School. This is a first and final reading. Did someone want to go through what this is?
Certainly. Thank you very much. This is on behalf of Kristen Hennessy, our Nutritional Services Director, a purchase of a Grab and Go kiosk for Plymouth High School. First and final reading. As you know, Canton High School received one of these units as part of the Canton Servery renovation in 2018. And then in 2019, the kiosk was added at Salem High School. So this completes the addition of these kiosks at the park. The nutritional program is a federal program, and as such, has procurement guidelines in addition to the board policy on procurement. It is then approved by Michigan Department of Education. Three quotes were obtained, and we're following the protocols used by Wayne Risa Equipment Purchasing Program under COOPRO. And those three quotes received, we are recommending Stafford Smith, an amount of $39,150 in the purchase of this kiosk. As you know, with delivery, it's going to take about 10 to 12 weeks. So we needed this to be first and final this evening. And this also was discussed at the Facility, Finance and Operations Committee meeting of August 26th.
Alright, does anyone have any questions?
Just a comment on this is that although we did not choose the low bidder, we chose the low bidder when shipping and installation were included in this. So, you know, that we made sure we were financially representing the district while on this process.
Anything else? Alright, I'm looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider a resolution to purchase Grab and Go kiosk at Plymouth High School. First and final reading, action item 220806.
Sound them.
Okay, it's been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks. That we approve action item 220806, consider a resolution to purchase Grab and Go kiosk at Plymouth High School. First and final reading, on favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, say no. Alright, next up is action item 2207, consider a resolution to purchase a John Deere utility tractor. This is also a first and final reading tonight.
Yes, good evening. The grounds department and Mr. Rich Welsh would like to purchase a John Deere compact utility tractor to replace a 32-year-old John Deere tractor that we have currently, which has been rebuilt a couple times, but has failed now for good, we believe. The proposed new tractor will be purchased through the, from John Deere through Hudson, Inc., formerly Banner and Sons of Southland. This pricing was obtained through Michigan RMC bid, a cost of $25,822.44. This purchase will be paid for with the maintenance and grounds equipment replacement budget, and was also discussed at the Finance and Operations Committee meeting of August 26th.
Alright, does anyone have any questions?
Just a note on this one, we're purchasing first and final on this because there is a tractor in stock. And if we get it now, we avoid the delay of manufacture, which would be substantial. And we need this to move some alternate equipment this fall and winter.
Okay. Alright, anything else? I'm looking for a motion.
Madam President, I move that we consider a resolution to purchase a John Deere utility tractor. First and final reading, action item 220807.
Sound them.
It's been moved by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks. That we consider... 220807, on favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Alright. We're done with that. Thank you so much, Ms. Piers, and your entire team. Alright, the next thing we have on our agenda is citizens' comments. And citizens' comments, there are time for the school community to bring their concerns and feedback to the school board. This is not a back-and-forth, and questions are not answered during this time. Individuals wishing to address the board during citizens' comments are reminded that their time to speak is limited to three minutes. Speakers are required to address the board as a whole, and not individual board members, the superintendent, or other district employees, or any members of the audience. Speakers should take into account the rules of common courtesy and refrain from making personal attacks against employees, students, parents, community members, or members of the board. Further, school district employees and board members have the right to request a closed session pursuant to Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act if a member of the public has a complaint against an employee or board member. The board and I as the board president and president of the meeting reserve the right to interrupt any individual who does not follow the board's public participation rule or who makes statements that are abusive, obscene, or defamatory. Moreover, an individual who continues to refuse to adhere to the public participation rules or continues to act in an abusive or obscene manner that rises to a level of disorderly conduct or breach of the peace may be removed from the board meeting. So when your name is called, please come up to the microphone. Mr. Brandon will start the timer, give your name, begin your speaking. And at the end of three minutes, please wrap up your comments. The first one I have is Cara Gavin. And then after Cara will be Teresa Calmen.
Can you hear me okay? Great, thanks. My name is Cara Gavin. I'm the mother of a seventh grader at West Middle School. And I'm here first and foremost to say thank you. Thank you to all the parents and community members, more than 1,500 of you, who spoke up over the past four weeks. You raised your voices to call for our district to truly follow the science-based guidelines of our national and state health authorities in order to ensure safe in-person learning. You called, you emailed, you spoke at the last board meeting, you connected on social media, you contacted your elected officials, and you signed and shared a grassroots petition. For this extraordinary effort, I say thank you. We delivered those 1,500 petition signatures to the district offices on the afternoon of Friday, August 20th. And that next Monday, Superintendent Mayor announced the update to the district's COVID-19 mitigation guidelines, including a key provision, a mask requirement for all our students, teachers, and staff at all grade levels. And for this, I say thank you. Four days and 1,500 signatures on a separate petition later, Wayne County's Health Department announced the same requirement for all schools in our entire county. And for this, I say thank you. Maybe all of this would have happened even if none of us had spoken up. Maybe the steady rise in COVID transmission in our district, which has been above the CDC's high level for more than two weeks now, would have been enough. Maybe the increasingly urgent pleas from health professionals and the scary headlines from overwhelmed children's hospitals down south would have been enough. Maybe so. But no matter what prompted these changes, I'm here to say thank you. As our school year begins, we'll be in a better position than many districts around the state. Of course, what happens in the coming days and weeks depends not only on what happens inside our schools, but also on what happens outside them too. Masks are just one weapon against COVID-19. So I also want to make a couple of new requests. The district staff made a very nice graphic about the mask requirement. Could you also make something like this to help families understand who has to get tested or quarantined and who doesn't after a close contact? The county's guidance unfortunately isn't easy to understand. Can you make rapid testing kits freely available for home use, so that when a child wakes up with sniffles and a headache, their parent can know with decent certainty in about 15 minutes whether it's COVID or not? Right now, they'd have to go out and spend $25 at a drugstore to know that. A rapid test kit at home could make the difference between a child who misses school because of a mild allergy and a child who gets sent to school with COVID that's been mistaken for a common cold. Masks are a great start. Combine them with clear quarantine instructions, free rapid testing, distancing, ventilation, and school-based vaccination and testing, and our district can stay on track for in-person learning, and that is something we can all be thankful for. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Teresa Calmen and then after Teresa, is she up? Okay?
Hello. As the mom of a fourth grader in a special education room at Bentley, I want to thank you for taking the progressive step of mandating masks in our schools to protect our children and our community. Masks are an important piece to fight this vicious virus, a virus that extends beyond politics and hits us in a fundamental place that many of us take for granted because it's so automated, our ability to breathe. My son was born at 1 pound 13 ounces and spent 76 days on a ventilator. He spent the next five years on and off of oxygen, and even at 10 years old, he requires breathing treatments when ill. I have heard people say they don't want to wear a mask because they aren't afraid of a virus that only kills a small percentage of people and only produces severe illness in 2% to 3% of children. The year my son was born, less than 0.7% of babies were born as micro青 mies like him. That is less than a third the percentage of children affected by severe COVID illness. Percent don't matter when it's your child. For us, it was 100%. There's nothing more heartbreaking than watching your child or loved ones struggle to breathe. It is something I wouldn't wish on any person in this room or in our community. Wearing a mask is one step we can all take to protect children like my son and the most vulnerable people in our community. While my son struggles with asthma, oral aversion, and sensory issues due to his rocky start, he wears a mask with no complaint because he knows it can protect those around him. This is the crux of a mask mandate. It is not about the freedom to do what you want to do. My son wears a mask to protect the others in his class, but relies on others to protect him. I know you've gotten some pressure from members of the community to be able to choose what is best for their family. This equates to saying one family's freedom to choose to wear a mask is more important than the lives of the highest risk and most vulnerable of our community. People with special needs spend their entire lives attempting to make the world more accessible and safe. This past year highlighted this as many children, including my son, struggle to learn in a virtual format. While I excel as his mom, I'm a poor substitute for the special ed teacher, one-to-one paraprof, physical, occupational, and speech therapist that are all needed to give him an equitable education to his peers. Having a mask mandate makes education inclusive for all children, especially those with special needs. It helps keep our children in the classroom, supporting not only their physical well-being, but social, emotional, and mental health as well, something everyone in this room supports. Masks are not a sign of fear or a symbol of giving up your freedom. They represent perseverance, strength, and a commitment to taking one small action to protect our children and our community. I look forward to this new school year and seeing all of us rise together as the extraordinary community that we are with the common goal of supporting our kids. Thank you.
All right, next up is she up? Okay, and after her is Riley Radman.
Wait, I just make sure this is not going to fall. Hey, I come here tonight to express my concern about a Facebook post that Mr. Wilson had made when he's running for school board. Because of all the education on diversity, inclusiveness, and equity, I found it very pertinent to the conversation, maybe helpful, maybe not helpful. I don't know if he's anything sorry, but I did see this.
I'm sorry, you need to address the board?
Okay, okay, sure. Anyways, it says, this is just, this is, this is a thing that says...
I'm sorry, this is, this is not related to Sean's work on the school board?
Yes, it is. Because this is what he believes and what he said, and it's directly opposite of what he tries to say on the board. So it's, it's saying that if he sees one of these things...
Madam President, I'd like to request a recess at this time.
That they're racist. You call...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. As a, as a board member, Sean has a right to request a closed session if somebody has a complaint against him.
Okay. Okay, but then I'll talk about diversity and equity then. Okay. I see some hypocrisy going on in what, what, what we're claiming and what's going on. I think that this, that there is also a way of, of making hate speech that I think we all need to be careful about. And I think that, you know, when they talk about a hostile environment in the school, I think that there are many ways that one can be created, or one that can be, that we need to prevent that. I think there's a whole group of people that, for what they believe politically, in our promoting safe in school climate, it says that hate speech is a controversial term for speech intended to degrade, and it also includes moral or political views of other people. And I think we need to be careful about that because I think that there tends to be a sort of a slant. And I'm concerned about our teachers' unit that seems to support political views and degrade some of the other perspectives, other people, in that they aren't represented. I understand this is a district with many students from different backgrounds, customs, beliefs, and skin color. Sorry, it's hard to breathe in here. But our district's mission statement represents our students when it states the students are citizens of the world. This is incorrect. They are citizens of the United States of America who live in the world. Thankfully, we are not yet subject to the world's laws and rights of freedom. Why do you think people come here? Instead of creating divisions, we need to unite as Americans to preserve the freedoms we still have. No one in a free country is required to embrace or celebrate the differences that create diversity. Not all aspects of diversity, such as religion, gender identity, and choices for reproductive health, are celebrated by all. Otherwise, that would be conformity, not diversity. We have to treat each other with respect, no matter what differences we have. Perhaps then that would be the day that Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King referred to in his "I Have a Dream" speech, when all of God's children will be able to sing with a new meaning. "My country tis of the sweet land of liberty of thee I sing. Land where my fathers died, land of the pilgrims pride, from every mountainside let freedom ring." Please tell me how focusing on a skin color will have a positive outcome. Are we going to have a color chart which determines what group one belongs? Will we put the student who has a white mother and a black father, where will we put them? Will there be a separate category for adopted children? Why can we classify people by what we see when it comes to skin color, but we can't when it comes to sex or gender? Also, how does the district define privilege? Are the students of color in this district more privileged than the students in the Detroit schools? Are the students of color who make the Division One college football team more privileged than the students of shades of white who only make the Division Three football team? I, I, I understand there's so many different varieties of people and everything, but you know, I'm adopted. I don't even know what half of me is. I have a black nephew. My kids have been in this district for a long time, and they have many friends. I don't know what's changed here, but it's quite different than what it was. And kids, yeah, everybody gets teased. My kids got teased rotten. I mean, terrible. But it's, it's... I want to say, and I would love to meet with you sometime. I don't mean this as a negative.
Thank you. Riley Radman, and then we have Eric Batow. I'm hoping I said that correctly.
Good evening and thank you for your attention. I apologize if I'm not entertaining enough for the maskers. It sickens me to see the email that was sent out this afternoon stating that PCCS had already made the decision to mandate masks in all our buildings before the county issued an emergency order. It's unfortunate that the school board did not support the families of peace up and fight for them to allow the parents to be parents. God help us all if we're going to rely on the government and school to parent our children. United we stand, divided we fall. The mask issue has nothing to do with protecting our children, unless of course you can only catch COVID inside school. Rules for thee, not for me. No mandate where adults gather, only at school for kids. Simply a way to keep us divided. Arguments over a magical piece of cloth that a mom made in her basement that was supposedly saved the world. Don't insinuate that I am a murderer. Don't tell your kids not to pull with other kids simply because they don't wear a mask. I don't care what your kid does to feel safe and happy. I would never tell my child to stay away from them. I fully intended to come here tonight to express my anger. Instead, I'm going to make a plea. Think for yourself. Do some research. Talk to Karen with the silver ring and a Biden sticker on the bumper. Talk to Jim with the F-150 that probably displays the American flag. Talk to people that may have opposing views. Honestly, listen to them. Think for yourself. Stop making decisions based on political affiliations or social pressure. For God's sake, these are your children. Invest the time and effort to make the best choices. Truly think for yourself. Make a decision that is based on what is really best for our children. Our bodies are not, our bodies are meant to expel what it does not use, not recirculate the waste that you breathe out. Do this. While your children aren't school, wear your mask. Working at home, at the gym, sitting on the couch, all day, just as you're telling my child to do. Think for yourself. See if you still have the same opinion. Be a parent. Be involved. Your kid is sick, keep him at home. Most kids will try and toughen it out and go to school. Be a parent and keep them at home. That will make a significant difference. If you still feel the need to mask up, by all means, go ahead. I will respect your decision. You should respect mine. Do you not think that you're on a moral high ground? Do not force your beliefs on my child. Do not bury my child. I believe, I do not consider myself as an anti-masker. I believe as parents, we have the right to make decisions that are in the interest of our children, not the government or the school. God bless us. God unite us. Thank you.
Batow?
Why are we universally masking children in school? Is it prepped students or is it prepped others when they get outside of school? Let me address both. If the mask mandate is because we're worried about who students may pass COVID on to, we shouldn't be. Every adult has had the opportunity to get a vaccine, and if not, even get it tomorrow. When the vaccines rolled out, cases and illnesses immediately plummeted and you were able to open things up and drop the mask because vaccines work. For a vaccine, there's always going to be breakthrough infections. From CDC data August 23rd, more than 171 million people in the US have been fully vaccinated. 2,063 have tragically lost their lives from a breakthrough. That's 0.001% of fully vaccinated, which is less than the chance of death from a 2019/2020 flu stat, according to CDC. Accordingly, universally masking students to protect adults who can get the vaccine is ludicrous. So it must be masking to protect students then. According to CDC data from August 25th, since the start of the pandemic, 454 children under 18 have tragically died with COVID. That's out of a population of 73 million. That's 0.0006%. That's half the rate for many deaths who have gotten the vaccine that I just earlier stated. So even without a vaccine, children under 18 are safer from COVID than adults who have the vaccine. From best available CDC estimates, there's more flu deaths in children and pneumonia than there have been COVID deaths in the 19-year-long period, and twice as many deaths from pneumonia as COVID in that same period. If we need a mask mandate now for COVID, we've been grossing net worth on the flu vaccine for decades. Additionally, in 2019, more than 2,000 American kids and teenagers died in car crashes. If we implement a mask mandate to protect kids from COVID, we better implement a policy that forces kids to walk to school. The CDC released a study on late night where they studied 90,000 students attending 169 schools in Georgia. The study looked at mitigation measures like school mask mandates and social distancing and compared the spread of COVID between schools that had these measures versus schools that did not. The CDC found no statistically significant difference between the spread of COVID between the schools that had the mitigation and those that didn't. What that means, if you don't speak stats, is that any difference experienced would be due to randomness and not due to mitigation measures. You might be saying, what about Delta? In the heart of the Delta Centers in the UK, schools remained open and most of them without mask mandates. From data collected and published by Brown University Professor Emily Oster, students faced adverse health outcomes from the death of variant at rates practically identical to the flu and other respiratory illnesses. Edwards Week in New York Magazine published that the UK, Ireland, Scandinavia, France, Netherlands, Switzerland, and Italy exempted all kids from wearing masks in classrooms, and there's zero evidence of more outbreaks in schools in these countries relative to the US from studies done. I'm not against wearing masks. I just want choice. Are you considering what forcing every kid into a mask does for some? I taught in-person high school last year and saw what universal masking was like. The depressive state and lifelessness emanated from rooms and hallways was palpable. There was no emotion, no connection, just blank expression and solemnness. I recently ran a low crew freshman orientation for every high school here, where last Thursday we had over 1,000 high schoolers outdoors at the stadium. The energy and excitement and joy I saw on so many maskless faces was absolutely incredible and been missing for over a year and a half. Pushing students back into masks is unnecessary. A massive study of 26,000 schoolchildren in June showed that approximately 68% had problems while wearing masks in schools. These individuals had irritability at 60%, headache at 53%, difficulty concentrating at 50%, less happiness 49%, reluctance to go to school 44%, and impaired learning 38%. The researchers concluded. My question to you is, what are you doing for the families and children who are in school that are suffering from some of these problems, are severely depressed from always wearing masks, and struggling with mental health, including myself last year? What actions do we have? How we support them so they can move the...
Thank you so much, your time is up.
Let's give the choice. You say from the email that we can assure us, pivot by dropping the mask mandate.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Brandon, do you have another one? Yep. Okay. And then we have Lauren Lucas. Come on up, please.
Hi, board members. I wasn't prepared to talk tonight, but I feel that I have to. I'm the widow of Don Lucas. He was the security guard for Plymouth Canton. He passed away on November 8th from COVID. I'm appalled at listening to so many people say that a mask isn't important, that it's taking away their freedom. It is there to protect everybody. Mine protects you. Yours protects me. Dead is dead. My husband is dead. 22 days, he was in the hospital. We never once got to see him, and I had to make the decision to discontinue his life support over the phone. I hope to God that everybody that's complaining about masks stops and thinks. I don't care if 99% of the people survive. My husband got meningitis in a lost percentage. His life meant something. This was just as important. If you cannot even think enough about your fellow neighbor to do the simple thing, covering your face, then we have a lot more problems than we think. I want to commend you. I want to thank you for making the decision. I know it was difficult. On behalf of my husband, I know he would commend you. So thank you very much. It was a hard decision, but you did the right thing. Thank you.
We are down to act, which is action items and discussion. And we have future agenda topics. If you have future agenda topics, you can send them to me and Ms. Matt. We will add them to the draft calendar. We also have to think about, if people could think about, we have, we need a date to finish, to work on, not finish, but to continue with our high-impact school governance work. So I'll send an email so everyone can let me know their availability. I have the dates 9/16, 9/29, or 9/30. The 16th would be a Thursday, then the 30th would be a Thursday, and then, I mean, yeah, so the 29th would be a Wednesday, and then it would be a Thursday from 6 to 8. We also will need to schedule a meeting to do board goals. So send it out with everybody's availability. If you get back to me, we will get those done. All right. So then, the next section is follow-up board questions. We do not have any from tonight, but let me see what we had from... I'm waiting minutes. They closed, so let me get them back open. So from our last meeting, the kiosk for verification between requirements and recommendations. How relevant and how the supplies to athletics facilities, did you get those answered?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And books could come out in board notes. Perfect. And then, member Christensen asked if a hypothetical could be added to a local data source of the guidelines, and I believe that was done. And then, member Sido asked if a URL code could be added to the mitigation guideline back in it, and that was also done. So now we are going to... so now we are going to adjourn to a special meeting. It is MTSS, which is multi-tiered support system of support, systems of support, systems of support, which is just educators speak for making sure that students have the supports and services necessary for them to have an excellent education in the district. So this portion will not be, is a workshop, it is not going to be recorded, but anybody is welcome to stay. It's generally speaking, a lot of good information. And so we will be going into our special meeting. Does anybody need a break before we start? Are we okay? All right. We will get going. I've seen, well, wait a minute, if people are leaving.